Welcome. This is the November 19th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, November 23rd, 2018. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, November 23rd, 2018. The date of certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, December 9th, 2018. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. I just have a couple of things to talk about before we start the meeting. If you are here for 18-03012 Hailedge, that application has been withdrawn. Also, for the rest of the applications, we have just four members here at this time. So you're going to need a unanimous vote. And if you would want to be heard tonight, that's fine, we'll hear you. I'm sorry for it. Got a couple calls of people that weren't feeling well today. If not, we can forward it on to next month, though, up to what you want to do. Voting tonight would be Mr. Wolfher, Mrs. Tata, Mr. Rice, and myself, Chairman Rusik. First application is 18-031, variance request from Infra Metals for building coverage of 40% to expand building to cover craneway at 8 Penn Highway. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Variance request from Infra Metals for building coverage of 40%, where 27.7% exists and maximum 35% is permitted to expand building to cover craneway at 8 Penn Highway in an I-40 district. Applicant seeks building addition to expand existing craneway covering, existing craneway covering by 89,950 square feet, which will increase the building coverage from its current 27.5% to 40%. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Loughlin Fitzgerald. Our office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant and property owner Infra Metals Company. As noted in the legal notice, we are seeking a variance to permit coverage of 40% where 35% is permitted. You may be familiar with the InfraMetal site. It's located off of Penn Highway. It's a structural steel distributor, and it also performs certain processing onsite. The steel which they work with is of considerable size and weight. The equipment that does the onsite processing has to be of significant size, obviously, to handle the strength of the steel and the size of the steel. So in order to move the steel, they need the large overhead cranes that operate on tracks above where the steel is placed and the equipment is. So the applicant is looking to create a structure over it. Part of the InfraMetal site does have a metal covering for where they work, and they would like to extend this. And it's primarily for the safety of the workers. So that's pretty much it, pretty straightforward. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Joan. So how much more is still going to be open down there? And the only reason why I question it is that I'm happy to see this because you hear a lot of people on the east side of town during the summer, windows open, people talk, and they hear the crashing of the steel. This is probably going to help a lot with that.
I think so.
So just in my own curiosity, what is left that's open? Yes. Thank you.
This is the area that we're seeking to cover. And so here's Penn Highway. And this area is already covered. We're seeking to cover this area. This section is still outside. So there is, I don't want to say insignificant, but I think that this area is primarily industrial. The closest residential area is over here. So this would, I think, provide some additional sound barrier, if I can put it that way. I mean, it's not going to be perfect.
Yeah, no, but it's going to help.
Every little bit helps. And, you know, when they have bad weather, like lightning, they have to shut down and move all the employees inside because you have these large metal, basically lightning rods, and they would obviously like to cover that.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions? Mrs. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. She has to get back there. You're welcome. Is this a fully enclosed structure? Is it just an overhang?
No.
It's a complete building?
It's basically a metal structure. Again, if you've been driven by the InfraMetal site, you're basically going to be extending what's there.
Expanding kind of what's already there. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anybody else? Is there anybody here speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir. Please come up to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record.
Paul Rish, 70-Hins Drive, Wallingford. I own the mobile home park next to the steel company.
Sir, can you spell your last name?
R-I-S-H.
Thank you.
And I just want to say it's good information for me. So if it helps with the noise down there, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against this application? Seeing none. Counselor, do you have anything further you want to add?
No.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 18-031. Second?
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chair Rusik?
Yes, your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next application's 18-032, variance request from Roland Technologies Incorporated for building coverage of 27.5% and to allow 125 parking spaces to construct building addition and expand parking at 320 and 340 Barnes Road. I figured I'd let you get all set up, and then we'll get started.
Mr. Chairman, we do have staff notes.
Well, hold on. You're all set? Everybody's done? Madam Secretary, is there any correspondence?
Yes, thank you. Staff notes, variance requests from Roland Technologies Incorporated for building coverage of 27.5%, where 16.8% exists and maximum 25% is permitted, and to allow 125 parking spaces where 101 parking spaces exist and 161 parking spaces are required to construct building addition and expand parking at 320 and 340 Barnes Road in an IX district. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, and I represent the owner and applicant of 320 Barnes Road and the contract purchaser and applicant for 340 Barnes Road. The parcels involved in the appeal, as you know from our application, are two abutting parcels, 320 and 340 Barnes Road. Both parcels are located in the IX zone. Both parcels are currently developed. 320 Barnes Road is developed with an existing industrial building. It is 8.4 acres of land. There is a 69,697 square foot building with approved 101 parking spaces, owned and operated by Roland Technologies. To my right is Stephen Demugno, the president of Roland Technologies, and certainly can answer any questions you might have about the operations of Roland Technologies. 340 Barnes Road, the second piece, is 1.1 acres of land in size. It's developed in an existing residential building. So even though this is the IX zone, it is a legal, non-conforming use. At the easel, Mr. Chairman is our friend's from Consulting Engineers, John Gable, the project engineer. The request this evening is to expand the existing building using both 320 and 340 Barnes Road to do that. Roland Technologies wants to expand its building here in Wallingford and expand its business and remain on Barnes Road. It has contracted to purchase 340 Barnes Road to assist in this expansion effort. While desired by all, the applicant and the town, the two contiguous parcels, 320 and 340, cannot be merged at this time into one parcel. And let me explain to you why. It's something we've gone over with Mrs. Hand and with Mrs. Torrey, so that they understand our predicament. 320 Barnes Road, which is the existing Roland Technologies building, is defined as an establishment by Connecticut statutes. That means that under Connecticut DEEP rules, it is a location where there has been some contaminants over a period of time that need to be handled and remediated. It's fairly typical, the type of business Roland Technologies is in, would lend itself to that technical need. And again, it's a technical issue with what is an establishment. 340 Barnes Road, of course, is residential and has never been used, to my knowledge, as an industrial parcel. And so if we were to merge the two pieces into one, which would benefit my client from a tax perspective, operational perspective, but again, can't at this point, 340 Barnes Road would also become an establishment by the way the statute is written, so that it too would be subject to the requirements of monitoring and remediation that affect 320 Barnes Road currently. So we're here with a couple of variances designed because of the nature of our inability to merge the two pieces at this time. Just as an aside, when you're involved with the establishment program at the Connecticut DEEP, you go through the process, it's usually about a 10-year period. It takes a while before the state says you've completed all the monitoring or remediation that we think is important. They give you a clean audit letter, and that's usually about a decade or so. We're several years into that, but again, at this point, the parcels would have to remain separate. Now, in order to meet the applicant's goal of expansion, we've applied for two variances. One is a variance of building coverage for Section 5.1C, and the second is a variance of the minimum parking requirement per Section 6.11C. As to the first variance, let me just begin with what you've got up at the board. You have a picture of what is being proposed. This would be the expansion of the existing building. It's been, as John's pointing to you, there's an existing building. You probably are familiar with it. I'm sure you've gone out to the site. There's the idea of using 340 Barnes for primarily parking. There it is, John. 340 Barnes is surrounded by 320 Barnes. It's right in the middle of that upside-down U. The allocation of the use within the expanded building is what dictates the parking. So we're going to get to that in a minute. But in terms of the overall coverage, interestingly, when you look at the building and some of its architectural features, the building by this proposal would exceed your building coverage requirements by 2.5%. And why 2.5%? That's because there are architectural features that you can see on what John's pointing out to you, and I also have a handout that presents that even further, and we'll provide it to you also, a handout on parking counts. But generally speaking, board members, the building has certain features. You can see it in the design in front of you. There's also, I believe, a picture, John, that you have of the building itself. And so your regulations count areas which are eaves along the site of the building as part of the structure. So it's not just your footprint that determines your coverage, it's also the area that doesn't hit the ground, the eaves, canopies, awnings. And so we've got about 10,000 square feet as identified in our application that falls within the definition of your building coverage requirements, even though it really are just architectural features that are above ground. So your footprint will all be compliant with your regulations in terms of lot coverage or building coverage. It's the architectural features, the eaves, awnings, and canopies that put us over that particular number. And I think, as I understand it from talking to Amy, the reason that your regulations are designed as such, the reason that you include eaves and things of that sort within the building coverage is because they could be theoretically enclosed at some point. You could build a wall down from the top of the eve. That wouldn't make any sense, frankly, in this building. It is an architectural feature. It's there currently, and we can make that representation to you, or Steve can, that there is no plan ever, ever to use the eaves or canopy for a permanent part of the building. This is the maximum build-out on the site based upon its size. As to the second variance, the applicant is required by your zoning regulations to have 161 parking spaces based on the size of the building that's being proposed and the uses, the manufacturing office and warehouses, warehousing uses within that building. And the 161 parking spaces, this is kind of an interesting application, Mr. Chairman. Usually, you know, people come to the town and the planner and zoning enforcement say, "Can you reduce the number of parking spaces and provide us more green area?" Here, we're asking you to allow us to reduce the number of spaces that are required so we can have more green area. And frankly, it's not simply a question of reducing the number of parking spaces for more green area, although that's a benefit, it's the fact that we don't need 161 spaces. There's an existing operation. Even though there are approved 101 parking spaces, which is the number of spaces required for this size building and its uses, only 81 of them are in existence. The other ones are kind of land-banked because they weren't needed. And so the town planner says, "If you don't need to pave all the parking, then just retain that area separate and distinct, and just pave the ones that you need." So if you've been out to the site, you'll notice that even though the requirement by regulation is 101, there's only 81 that are used. So now with this proposed expansion, again, I'm going to hand out, Mr. Chairman, a post-expansion Roland vehicle count, which tells us that since there are shifts there within the operation of the business, there will never be more than 65 employees onsite. And that's the maximum. So that for the number of car spaces that we're proposing, 125, it's certainly as far in excess of what we would ever need, but it does not meet that very large requirement of your regulations, 161. So I wanted to give assurances to this board that should you vary the parking requirement, you're not going to see cars parked out on Barnes Road or anywhere else, you know, up on the lawn. There is more than sufficient parking now with 80 spaces. We're going to increase the number of employees from around 90 to around 116 is the plan. That increase does not mandate doubling the size of the parking lot. So I'm going to hand that out as an exhibit. So you can see from that handout that even with the post-expansion, the maximum number of vehicles, they have the shift laid out, arrivals, departures. There's an average of two trucks per hour. So again, if you have 65 employees and two trucks during the typical hour, again, we are at 125, well in excess of the number of spaces that we really would need. And again, just by way of reference or reminder, again, implicit in our request is the ability to use 340 Barnes Road exclusively as parking. You can see from the design, again, until those parcels are merged into one, 340 would be a substantial amount of that parking area, again, until the merger and the whole issue with DEEP is resolved. I want to point out also, I think in our audience are the neighbors who own 340 Barnes Road, I do have a letter from them which is in support of the application. I'd offer that as an exhibit, too, please. And if you would, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to have Steve just say a few words about Roland Technologies, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we've, good evening. My name's Steve Demugno. We've been here--
Excuse me, can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
D-I, capital M, U-G-N-O.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've been in Wallingford for 25-plus years. We're very pro-Wallingford. It's pro-business, and we really enjoy our tenure here, working in this area. It allows us for employments from both the south and the north, and we're just looking to grow and stay here for a long period of time. We're a manufacturer, we're an extrusion company of specialty plastic films and sheets, and we're pretty much maxing out ourselves right now with this planned development. Presently, we do have two off-site warehouses that we plan to bring onsite with this expansion.
Thank you for thinking about staying in Wallingford and planning on staying in Wallingford. I think everybody does. Appreciate everybody that does, and I'll say thank you for everybody. The only question, I mean, I understand the building coverage situation, and my only question, and you've covered it rather well, was the parking. I was curious about how many employees you had--
Sure.
--and where you were going to end up in the end by only needing 125 when regulations said 161. And I understand today with computerized equipment, less employees, more equipment.
Well, actually, we're presently at 98 employees. We're actually at more employees than we presently need. We're presently building our capacity, and that means buying extrusion equipment. And we have to train our people. Our operators require a minimum of a year and a half to two years' experience before they can operate, be part of an operating line. We presently have 98 employees, and we have 81 parking spaces. I think we have five different shift schedules. These are for either manufacturing people, maintenance people, QC people, and then we have our normal office staff. So really, from our viewpoint, we're maxing out our infrastructure now. When you're building manufacturing capacity, you really have to build it before you can sell it. Because if you try to sell it and you can't deliver it, then you can't do anything. So our maximum count that we're looking for on our organizational chart is nowhere over 120. And right now, we're 98, and we have 81 parking places. And I have to tell you, at 11 o'clock this morning, there was 19 empty parking spots. So we love Wallingford. We really want to stay here. We're making significant investments in equipment and people. Our jobs are well-paying, and again, we're very pro-Wallingford.
Okay, thank you very much. Has anybody got any questions? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience who want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody speak against? Counselor, you have anything further to add?
No, again, I think that, you know, again, the two variances, the building coverage because of the architectural features, eaves and canopies, pretty clear, pretty straightforward. And the parking spaces, we wanted to give you assurances, and that's why we've had the exhibits and had Steve come here to speak to you, that I'm very comfortable with the number. You know, in the whole square footage of the building is a 2,500-square-foot cafeteria, yet it still gets counted on parking spaces, even though it's the employees where they're using it. So we're very comfortable with the number Steve has pointed out.
Okay. If you're all set, then I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Chairman, make a motion to increase the lot coverage and to reduce the parking requirement? We can't vote on the two items at the same time. We have to do separately. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you. I make a motion to increase the lot coverage. Second?
Motion to approve the increase in the lot coverage, Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Rusik?
Yes.
And make a motion to reduce the parking requirement. Second?
Motion to approve the parking requirement, Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Rusik?
Yes. Application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again for staying in Wallingford.
Okay, next application is 18-017, variance request from Harvest Park Associates LLC for outside storage of dumpsters in front yard at 101 North Plains Industrial Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks to locate dumpsters in front yard where dumpsters must be located in rear or side yards only. Parcel is a rear lot with single access to six associated commercial buildings and parking facilities in an I-40 district. Lot shape in combination with configuration of the six buildings causes Buildings 2 and 5 to identify dumpster location in side yard where zoning regulations identify same yard to be a front yard. This office can support the location of dumpsters in the front yard of Buildings 2 and 5, provided conditions upon location and screening as depicted on proposed plan submitted 11/2/18. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, for the record, again. My name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Loughlin Fitzgerald. My office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and owner, Harvest Park Associates LLC. As you may recall, I appeared in front of you at your September meeting. At that time, I explained to the board that this was a property that was developed in the 1980s. The lot is a rear lot containing six commercial buildings. The approved design had the buildings on the perimeter of the property and the parking and main entrances of the buildings and the units facing the interior of the site. And the loading docks and the dumpsters are located at the opposite sides of the building. And the property has operated in this manner for about 30 years. And recently, it was determined that under the zoning regulations, that the property owner needed a variance to allow the dumpsters to remain in their current locations, which are technically in the front yard. When I appeared in front of you in September, the board asked me to go back to the applicant to try and see whether an additional screening could be provided, and also a request to more clearly identify the locations for the dumpsters. Applicant did prepare a plan, did meet with, I believe, Amy, and it appears that staff is satisfied that we addressed their concerns. Hopefully, we have also addressed your concerns, and we are requesting that hopefully that you will approve the variance that we have submitted.
Thank you. Joan, I have a couple of questions. I mean, I know this was a tough thing. We talked about it. It wasn't really like you could just say, "All right, we're going to put them here, and that'll take care of everything." But so I see along North Plains, you're going to, are they planting more pine trees there?
If I may.
Sure, thank you.
I don't know how clear it is, but this is pine trees. So they're putting in some more pine trees here, and then arborvitae, there's a whole series of arborvitae that are going, and the dumpster locations are here, here, here. So wherever there's a dumpster location, in addition to whatever existing vegetation is there, they're adding these plantings and these plantings in order to provide some landscaping.
Okay, so that's, we'll head right to my question, then. So you're going to have all that, which is fine, but what kind of screening you're going to have around the dumpsters?
At this time, there's no, like, fencing or anything like that, is that what you're asking me? No, there is nothing. Because again, depending on the tenant, the size of the dumpster can vary. vary. And so, I think that the compromise to try and address the concern of both the board members and staff was to use plantings as the, for those people who are driving by so that they don't have to see them without overly restricting what the tenants are going to do. Because, again, it's an industrial zone. You know, what I might need is different what the next tenant might need. So, this was the thought. It offered the flexibility that the site needs, at the same time providing, at least we believe, the screening that people are looking for.
Amy, is that correct? Because in discussion, I thought we still wanted screening around the dumpsters.
You were soliciting some sort of plan. There was a discussion regarding fencing with the slats and the fences or trees. As far as screening goes, the trees suffice as a screen. They don't have to be physically in proximity to the dumpster. They need to be screened from view. So, this, there, I met with the applicant to see what they were proposing, if that would work, and it does screen from view from the street. And I also, in the meantime, which they've located the dumpsters on their plan, so they weren't sort of haphazard, if you will, all in the drive aisle as they were, so at least against the building. But that suffices. That's defined as screening.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Joan. Do you have any-
Nope.
Anybody got any questions? Is there anybody in the audience want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody speak against? Joan, do you have anything further?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application number 18-017 with the screening as depicted on the proposed plan submitted on November 2, 2018.
Second?
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chair Ruzek?
Yes, your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
I put it on mute, but it still seems to ring whenever I'm in a hearing. Have a nice Thanksgiving, everybody.
You, too.
We, since we don't have a forum, we can't do the schedule. We'll have to postpone that to next month. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes Monday, October 15?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.